Morning, everybody. I call the meeting to order. We have a forum. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Second. I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. County engineer is not here.
He said last week he was coming back from a trip today. They're coming home today.
Okay. You didn't want to zoom drive.
Definitely.
So. I guess we'll set the hearing or we'll go on to drainage and do drainage claims. I seen there were some drainage claims. Is there a motion to approve the drainage claims? I have motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You guys get a chance to look over the claims?
You're good.
Motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We got a motion and second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, payroll too.
Well, sure.
You got a motion and second for the payroll eligibility claims? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any liquor lessons?
From there, the parts you jumped.
What's that?
You jumped.
Uh oh.
Reports.
I did. I'll take a motion to approve the reports. Hold. There's second.
I don't think this one he does.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, David.
I just.
I only did that for two years in a row.
I can.
Do you remember that?
Yes.
Is there a second to further reports?
A second.
I got a motion and second to approve the reports. Any discussion on them? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
And end up with an extra piece of paper, did you? I had a. Letter from the engineer's office.
All right, there he is.
There it is.
Good.
Any place on this one?
Yeah. Well, I thought, um.
No.
No, that one's anywhere. Yep, that's anywhere. The motion on it.
Oh, well.
I missed that, sorry.
AJ did. Yep.
We're down to Worth County Employee Benefit Program.
Hey, Ron.
Hello.
There were eligibility.
We're in.
You got them all signed?
Oh, did you motion that too?
That barrel eligibility.
Yeah.
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 If I did, well, he was zipping right. We were zipping right. We're too excited to get to budget work. I doesn't like. It's on there.
I slow down.
No.
Um. We gotta go back to drainage.
Oh.
Did you need to call?
Jacob.
Jacob during dates to the answer sheet.
You didn't call on your phone?
Yeah. Well, there's a number. Well, they might. Are they there?
But he just called me. Oh, he might.
Stay at home.
Yeah, I don't know whether he called from home.
Hi, may I speak to Jacob, please?
Uh, he is in a meeting right now. Can I call you back in a little bit?
Sure.
And who is this?
Um, Jackie Bakehouse.
And your phone number, Jack?
Um, six four one.
Wait, wait, wait. Yeah. Let's step on maybe hold on.
I want everybody. He's gonna jump out. Yeah, yeah, Jacob, you're in the meeting. So. We gotta figure out meeting days.
Yes. Um. We've got. Thirteen and all of its. Districts that drain into it.
Eleven.
Or eleven, yeah, eleven, sorry.
So that's. Val has written down twenty-four, thirty-four, thirty-seven, forty-nine, fifty-two.
County's on it.
Again, please.
Oh, sorry. Come on, Jacob, keep up. Okay, twenty-four, thirty-four, thirty-seven, forty-nine, fifty-two. Just got ready to say bingo.
And you could close.
Then we have eleven.
And then on their own, I think, is thirty-two and seventy-two.
Okay. Are those two want to do the same thing, a thirty-two and seventy-two?
You wanna do that too?
I think, well, let's do those. On their own day, but together. Let's do those on a whole different day.
Okay. That sounds good. Is that eleven mess? That'll probably wanna be one day.
I mean. Yeah, we'll try to do that all in a day, but it'll take us all day. Eleven and all the lateral. Maybe we start with. I think do eleven first. The earliest in the day. And that way people can.
Will we have different time slots for the different ones, or will we have them all together? I'm guessing we'll have a lot of the similar, a lot of similar landowners, yeah.
Yeah, let's just have them all come at the same time, because everyone will have to be there for eleven.
Yeah, and they'll have to be there for the field first, so then we should hear it once.
And then. We'll just go off from there, one right after the other.
So go like.
And we'll just maybe see how big a crowd there are for the, for the lateral. And try to do it that way. Um, but I think it'll take us. We start at nine in the morning? Uh, you got it.
Or do you think we should go down a day other than a meeting day? Could we do that on a special day meeting?
We gotta get it on a day.
If we just have our regular stuff, you know, there's no reason we couldn't start it on that day if I could.
To be safe, should we just go with a?
It's up to you guys.
What days were better viewed and we need. For publication, I always forget. We need, what, twenty days or ten days?
Ten.
We need twenty days for reclass.
Twenty, did you say?
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So.
And Val needs time to prep, so I wanna give her at least a week or two.
Yeah, I think it'd be okay, even if we did it early March.
Okay.
No one's in the field by then or anything. I think that would be.
Like March.
Six.
Six. We don't budget stuff with that, I hope, right?
Good. Good work for me, March sixth. It'll do. All eleven plus all the laterals. We'll just have them scheduled eight o'clock in the morning. We'll try to get it out there by noon.
Okay. And since the other two are a little smaller, should we back up to like February twenty-seventh, or should we go out a little further?
We could do those. We could do those earlier. I think that'd be good.
Yeah.
And then. And just have them after a board meeting.
Seventh after a board meeting.
So like nine thirty?
So the sixth is a Monday. He said he wants to go right away, so he said he wants to start at eight. That's, that's a Monday.
Oh, eight. Okay, I thought you said nine.
He said eight the last.
Okay.
So you better move after.
Yeah, I. I think if we, I think we could be there for four hours, especially part of, part of Northwood Bennett.
And so we go at the seventh Tuesday?
Seven. How's that work? March. March. What's up to you, Murray? Me on the field, yeah. I'm fine with it.
How's that work for you?
It'll have. So that will have annexation for all of them at eight and then reclassification at nine.
Okay.
Do we have annexation as well?
So we going with the seventh? March seventh work for you, Jacob, instead of the sixth?
Yeah, looks, that works for me.
You're going at eight o'clock?
Yeah, I think. You guys can get up that early. I think that'd be good.
Well, you're the one that's gotta drive.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be okay. I think it's good. I think it's gonna take a long time, because we got annexation first. For all of them, and then we'll have reclass for all of them.
So should I say, should we put different times? Should we put? Or should we just have everybody come at eight o'clock?
I think we have everyone for annexation come at eight o'clock. And then have the reclass at nine, because legally we have to have the reclass after the annexation.
Okay.
So it can't be the exact same time. It's gotta be.
Got it.
We do annexation for all of them at eight and then reclass at nine.
Okay.
For all of them, and then we should give them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then thirty-two and seventy-two go February twenty-seventh at nine thirty?
Yeah, and that one we have annexation as well, so we'll do annexation at nine thirty and reclass at nine forty-five.
Okay. I think that'll cover it.
Alright, I think that'll work for me.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jacob.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
Yep, you too. Bye.
Yeah, that'll be fun.
Yeah, I'm there.
Be more, more fun than budgets.
What drainage?
Oh.
So since we're already talking about drainage, we wanna talk about. My proposed letter of resurrection.
Yes, do that drainage procedure we got. And the original one you sent out. All I wanted was, in other words, the thing is set up, right, the old fifty thousand in there.
Yep.
And I wanted to take it out in both places.
Yep.
But when you go to code, when it comes to requirements for engineers report. State still got it in there.
Fifty thousand.
But fifty thousand is still.
But it was passed.
It should be the code.
But it's fifty or the adjusted competitive threshold, whichever is more.
Yeah, you, it's, the way you read it. You can figure out how to do it with the fifty thousand in there, but there's no reason to have the fifty thousand up above or down below. So I'm thinking until the state gets their ducks in a row, we ought to leave it the way it was, because all you basically did on the original one was change it from the hundred and thirty-some thousand to one ninety-six, right?
Right.
Jackie?
I tweaked it a little bit more, but yeah.
But the other tweaks are minor.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, my proposal. I don't go along with, because I'm ahead of the state.
Which is not on town, so.
Well, and I'm gonna run it by Jacob and.
Yeah.
And Hudson.
That's run it by them, then let's act on that. I'm.
Oh, do you agree, Jackie, we'll go to the original one you had?
Oh, back to the fifty?
Yeah. So they got fifty down below, so they might as well leave fifty up above until the state gets their ducks now.
Okay.
Or do you guys wanna go with the new way they did it?
They told us, they told us it's been switched, it's been passed, so.
January first.
They just haven't updated code yet.
Well, the fifty thousand's been gone for a long time.
Well, that's still whichever is more.
Right.
Right, but the fifty thousand was gone two years ago.
Yeah. Right.
So that means they've got two years to get that adjusted.
Apparently their ID department's a little slow around doing the works right last week.
So.
No, I just, I just think that's still wording, but they, but they changed the brush or the competitive bid.
Right.
Yeah, run it by those guys, I guess, if they're okay with it, but.
Go. Yeah, either ways.
The fifty thousand in there is just confusing for people. It's like, what changes after fifty thousand? Well, nothing.
Right.
Right, they now changes after a hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Oh, we better go back and make a motion of the hearing dates.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, so public hearing dates that were, we discussed it, March seventh, right? In February twenty-second.
I'll second that motion. I got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll go down to Worth County Employee Benefit Program.
This is just to keep up proxy. It's the different, um. Redcoles and all that good stuff, and how much we're responsible for. For the seven fifty-one thousand and two thousand.
Right.
So.
That we discussed, so. You making a motion?
Yep.
There's a second.
I'll say.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are you there by Worth County?
Yep.
Through the county.
You get to be for a whole year.
Like those little pegs. So. On the county wage. I think that in order to keep from messing departments up. And. Making it hard for them to do their budget, I think we, we should rescind. The county wage increase and the date. And. To go with the fifteen fifteen an hour, but make it on a July first.
Well.
Fiscal year.
I wouldn't even worry about it right now. Just, just rescind.
Let's just rescind. I make a motion to rescind the motion on county wages.
And we can revisit it again in June.
I can second that, and I guess go for the discussion. I guess I assumed that it'd always been that way, that when we, we did a wage increase, that it would go on the fiscal, or it would go on the. County, you know, the fiscal year, not the calendar year.
Yeah, so it makes more sense to do it closer to.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because when you're projecting those, sometimes it isn't, or the new budget here, it's not in the past budget here, it's already been approved, so, I mean, that's, that was my assumption, and maybe that's my bad.
Any other further discussion?
No, I, I kind of assumed the same thing. It's just, everything's based on that.
Or we.
Yeah. Fiscal year.
Or I reworded to say it's for fiscal twenty-four. And not immediately.
Well, we, first thing we do is we send the whole motion, so.
Yeah.
You got a motion and second, so.
Yep, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll deal with it later. You wanna wait till June to do it, or do you wanna do it now?
I think.
That's. Uh, we'll just wait. This just gonna take out for a while.
Correct.
Kind of a crazy year.
And you can always reword it, uh, July first.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can just do it closer to that time. That's fine. This way, once it's reworded then, if we do it. That budget time next, next year, whatever we find.
I just thought it might make sense to do it when we change everybody else's salaries.
Right.
And that'll be in June.
Mm-hmm, right.
So.
Yeah, it's a simple on calendar years.
It did go to pop last year, so. Yep, something to do with me. Um. Up next is FY twenty-four Health Insurance Benefits.
Hey, that is. If you wanna set the recommended one thousand twenty dollars for premiums. Then I can do my budget math.
You can do your math. Miracle math.
Is there any motion to set the. One thousand twenty dollars for premiums?
Oh, motion.
Is there a second? Or a motion and second? Any further discussion on it?
And we just hope every, everything shakes out the way it's supposed to, and we don't have a crazy big year of claims.
Well, that's always, that's always in there.
Yeah, which luckily has worked so far.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Hey, before we get rolling on budget, I'm gonna take some.
Truly.
Um, most of the, first one is nine, so we can do the rest.
Let's get that day off today. What did they account?
Yeah, observe. Yep, she needs to hear, so. Here's Chris here with People Service.
Don't think so.
Most usually is that a minute? No. It's going to Department Head discussions.
When I be in those discussion?
Honor, do we have enough time? I thought we'd wait till after budgets to do that. Does sound okay?
Absolutely.
Do any Department Heads?
We'll be talking to each one of them, so.
Certainly. Supervisor Weekly. I'll go first. I have Windworth Vetco Executive Meeting, which you guys are all to. We went through the financials and staff report, and we approved the budget. Which for us this year was forty thousand dollars less, and that thing teeters up and down. Uh, then I had Partners for Children. We met the new coordinator, Jim McKean. And went through the contract expenditures, and then the planning committee reported back. And they came up with pretty much the same thing we did, that we need more mentoring in. The area, and we need to address substance abuse. Uh, I had Windworth Vetco Advisory Meeting, and there it was just community reports, nothing special going on there. And then I had a meeting, we all had a meeting for. Benefit Partners for the County and a budget workshop. That was my week. AJ?
I've met with, uh, Jason Petersburg, B and K, discussed the. Water main project of the interchange. Um, he's getting ready to go. Uh. Do, he'll be here in a week or two. For us to approve the plan and then send to the DNR, and if that works out, we're welcome. Bid. Hopefully in sometime in February. And hopefully we'll see bids in mid-March or whatever. ended by like November, so. Then we also worked on the, uh, had some discussion on the water rates throughout there, water sewer rates, um, for the water, made a little money last year and sewer loss. Um. We will, uh. Finish that stuff up and then, uh, set up a meeting with all the owners out there, just to discuss where we need to go with it. Once we get an actual number figured out, we'll, we'll bring it here. Uh, turned by you guys, and then, and we'll meet with those guys and hopefully implement by May or June, somewhere in there, just kind of depends on how you work out. It's all I.
I did two meetings in insurance and with Echo, and then also it has that transportation board meeting, has Matt, we discussed budgets. Um, they wanted to raise per capita levity, but, uh, I kind of, a couple of us, I just thought with. Just took a hundred thousand CDs, there was really no reason to raise it for capital, so we left it the same, and hopefully that doesn't affect the long term. There's no major commitments. They're using that money for other operational, so. Don't wanna short those guys, because that's what we made a decision on, is to keep the capital the same, so. Um, and then I also, uh, transportation wise, we just kind of discussed with DOT proposals are for the year and. Monies and stuff too, no, no budget hearings of that, but, and then I went to the Fair Board last night, uh. Appreciation, I guess it was kind of, and, uh. Um, they, they, during their meeting, they were discussing some of their things that they're trying to bring to the fair and stuff, and keep it new and active, uh. They also run up their process, get the bids for that fence. He's expecting a minimum of three, maybe four or five actually, people that wanna do it, so, um, that's good. They could maybe get some of it done this winter yet, but not the final. You know, getting it out of there, so if they were working to apply for a grant for the fence, new fence, they would not do that until fall, so. Um. Otherwise, they, you think just for the things we do, and, and, so that's what I have.
Okay, well, let's go back then, as long as we got time here, to the EMS continued discussion with Forest City.
Yeah, you guys saw that, uh, got a email from Thomas over there. He's the. President of their association or their committee, I guess. Um, and sent it over for about thirty-five thousand, I believe.
It says twenty twenty-three forty thousand.
I thought it was forty.
Oh, okay. I didn't read wrong, I apologize. Since forty thousand on there. Did you see it?
Maybe that was their actual.
I thought it said right here, twenty twenty-three forty thousand, and this is a hypothetical.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I think those, that's what they.
Well, they're kind of, they're kind of basing off the calls.
Last year.
The previous year's calls, I think, so, yeah, so, sorry, yes, forty thousand, you're correct. Um, which is, is almost identical to what Hancock County's paying. I think we're both about eight percent of. Their call volume, both counties are, and, and it sounds like Hancock's been contributing for years.
So is that just the lower south west part of the county, or is that the whole, like, now it's concluded?
That will include everything.
Okay.
Over there, because Forest City is going to.
Do the.
Do the count, their county wide. So they'll be working with. Lake Yells, uh, as far as providing paramedics for them, so, yeah, that, that will take care of the, the aid and service for Forest City and Lake Yells.
So are they asking for money this year? Cause twenty-three is this year.
So my, that would be yes.
I think they're asking for money July first.
Yeah.
Right.
That'd be.
And then new budget year.
Yeah.
Twenty-three, twenty-four budget year.
Right, so I took it.
It's twenty-three, twenty-four budget year. Yeah, this would be July first, effectively.
Which is the same thing Mesa City wants, is twenty-two, twenty-four.
Yeah, they're not asking for this current budget year.
No.
Fiscal.
Well, I just put twenty twenty-three, so.
No, that's fine. It's, we'll see.
So is.
Yeah, it is, like, so it gets that fifth book out of your script, but, yeah.
So is this accurate on their history?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, they have to report all that stuff, so they, they're. Members come.
So even, even this hypothetical example, their multiplier is pretty accurate too, then.
Must be. Must be for what, what it costs them or what to operate, it must be very accurate.
Yeah, they relayed it out nice for us. And showed us why and what when.
Yep. So, so, yeah, I mean, there's, there's forty thousand, which we knew was gonna be in that neighborhood anyways, to continue.
So between the two of them, we got three hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Yep, cause I know a lot of their discussion when they were lobbying for their essential service is that. Their tax barrier to wonder why we're going to another county where we're gonna be paying for it.
So, well. I see where they're coming from.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at, it's not in the budget right now, which means if they want it for twenty-three, twenty-four, it's gotta get in the budget. It depends on how we do this.
It was always part of our discussion, that's could be how it wasn't, money would have to go that way, and depending on how we lay things out, we didn't. Strictly being kind of wide, or we're gonna follow the same districts, or, you know, the first thing we need to do is look at whether or not to collect money.
So. Yep.
Well, you're kind of running out of time on that, because the township budgets are already out to the townships and.
Yeah, see, if we're gonna have the townships, but if we don't wanna take over the fire, like Jeff Grieve is saying that we have to, if we take over the. Emergency medical services, if we want the townships to do it, we gotta get them some figures on. Our multiplier and the calls in their township. Do we have them? Is that kind of stuff available?
Don't they need some notification that things are changing?
There'd be a notification change that we.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen this year, I don't think, but I think we could.
That's what I wanted to know.
If, well, as far as getting the, to the townships or the area, we'd probably have to go with HIPAA, I don't think they can give out addresses or anything like that, so I don't know if we can get like general locations or not, there's kind of a area there, you have to cautious, not much information goes out, but.
Well, you've.
To narrow it down to townships or something like that.
Well, you're all, what you've got, you've been reporting. Area.
Yeah, you could get it to that, yep, which, which version, which, which fire district, or which version of monitor district.
That's kind of where we have to go by, to start with.
Pretty much.
Pretty much, we don't, you, you, this is gonna be a developing thing, and then we.
We're just gonna have to average it.
Yeah, you're right, it's, it's, it's a budget thing that's, it's against, you know?
And it's already something.
You gotta bait, you base it off of what happened the year before.
And I go along with all of that stuff. It is like Iowa Minnesota border here, there's issues why we do, we're not, you know, across that border, it's in the county, and then, you know, the ambulance from Mesa City has to go ten feet into a brick of township or kind of reason, or whatever, it really doesn't make an issue.
Right.
Thing is, they're finally getting paid for what they've been doing.
Yep.
I'm just looking at, if it's gonna be on this year's budget, we gotta get on top of it, if it's not gonna be on this year's budget.
Hopefully.
And then July first, if it's not on this year's budget, and we don't do anything about it, are they coming into Work County?
They don't have to. So that's all we need to keep, either work this into the budget, or figure out what we're gonna do.
No, I mean, other than use AARP money, or whatever it was, we've talked about.
Well, there's only a hundred thousand of that.
Yeah, so that don't.
Can't take the other AARP money and use it for.
No, we already got plans for it.
Well, even what's left over, you can't use it for this, this is, this is a bill. You can't use it to pay your bills, you can't pay it to, you can't use it to pay your taxes.
It's lost income, though, or it's lost revenue, so.
So that's like a tribal money, that's, yeah.
That's a whole different.
That's a whole different ballgame there.
Yeah, we can use that hundred thousand. But the other ARP, boy, I'd have to look into that one. I don't. We can, 'cause a lot of places have used it for EMS.
Oh, they have. For actual operational costs, or.
Operational costs?
Establishing.
Or for a building.
Or. Well, eventually falls under that, too.
That I don't know.
I'll look into that this weekend, 'cause I think we gotta stay on top of this, the budget's coming right around the corner here. Yeah, you're going to. And I'm going down to Good Morning anyway.
Do all the networking you can.
Yeah, really, get Jamie Cashman in the corner and hold him there. You get the.
They'll probably be online.
Yeah, probably have to take a number.
Right. But.
Well, we know what the number is now, it's what everybody wanted to know, right?
Yeah.
So will Lake Mills have a number, too?
No, this is.
No, Lake Mills, well, that's why I asked.
This is Forest City's kind of taking over the buses in our Lake Mills, and they put together a, a deal that covers, a proposal that covers.
It's Mary, they're covering now.
Same area they're covering now, so for Forest City and Lake.
And they're coming over to the interstate, and then jogging out a little bit, and they're cutting down through there, so, so nothing's changed that way. So if these two figures we have, we are covered countywide.
Yes.
If we.
Well, and will anything ever change that Mitchell would wanna come so far in, or?
They've, there's been some discussion with the hospital over there, um, so that could be a possibility, but it's gotta be more discussions that have been done there.
Or would they wanna go to Mason anyway?
Which depends what the, what they need for care, you know, um, Mitchell County takes people to Mason all the time, so it just depends if they can't give them the care there, and then they have to go to Mason City, so. But, so, yeah, there's more discussion that could be done there, try to cover that corner of the county, too, so.
But the figure does affect the budget.
Oh, and it's not planned for.
And that's who there is right around the corner. I know that money ain't laying there.
No, it's not laying there at all.
Right, you know, even if you wanted the one that temporarily gets started, it's not typical. Anyway, I thought they put together a real good.
Yeah.
Really informational, so.
Thomas is very organized.
It's good.
Well, I'll get some more information this.
And we're on to department budget reviews, when the shirt is on.
Can we just adjourn?
Oh, we could.
And get this.
Yep. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So I'm okay. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for cherries.
Last, recording now.
Yeah, please.